Did you stop watering the plant? It's been almost five minutes. It's okay to talk.
We talk, the camera looks at you.
Way too great, it's true, it is.
So are we supposed to call you madam co-chair? Is that the proper?
Ms., whatever, no, I don't care.
Madam.
Oh, I'm a bad boy.
Is it really bad of me that I can't?
The first and the second one, is that what you're talking about?
Look like.
It was the same. I was gonna. There's, um.
I thought I was losing my mind.
And then.
I was losing my mind for a minute, because I kept going to a different page, just make sure.
The young man, who are you?
Marcellus.
Yeah, guys scroll.
Marcellus.
Marcellus?
Yes.
I was like, this thing's ninety pages.
I'm Dave.
Dave?
We're supposed to have our name tags out here.
I guess it'll be easy to.
Kelly's not here.
On both of them.
Oh, without Kelly here, we're all disorganized.
We didn't have him last week.
Or last month, whatever it was.
We have so many new ones, I haven't had a chance to make them off for you yet.
Okay, man, you're good.
Oh, I missed the second altogether.
It said disregard the last email, but then, I thought I had the.
Well, we could just announce our own names and say here, can't we?
Well, like I said, I feel a little better about myself as a.
No, you are.
As a human reader.
You are okay.
Vaughn doesn't know our last name, so call us.
I did hear them all, it's right here.
Did you notice that? How are you gonna say my first name, though? Okay.
I can call roll call.
I thought we were maybe losing.
No.
The jury's still out on if I'm losing or not.
I spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out where.
She's just Kristen. Kristen.
But interestingly, nobody's.
She's like, I'm gonna test these jokers.
That's usually what Kelly says, yeah.
There you go.
Yep.
Well, since I can hear all of you all chatting about a massive confusion on the agenda, hey, there's a confusion on the agenda.
We all figured it out, I think.
I was wondering. Yeah, so, we're gonna do a request to continue the second item, A twenty-six dash oh six. It's gonna be continued to a date certain of September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. We, I, we had caught the issue on the first release, and apparently it wasn't successfully addressed on the second release of the agenda, so we will, as part of the proceedings, address that, so we will only be hearing two items tonight. So, sorry about that. Welcome to all of the new commissioners to get a confusing agenda.
I thought they were messing with.
Thinking on the beginners, huh?
No, on that one.
Marcel, is it Mar- Marcella?
Marcellus.
Marcellus?
Yeah, M-A-R-C-E-L-L-U-S.
I thought that's.
Well, I assume.
When you talk, make sure you push that to have a red light.
Oh, yeah.
And then, because the recording doesn't pick you up unless that red light.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order, be standing for a flag salute. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, foundation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Kelly, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, we actually have a full docket of nine commissioners, so welcome to all of the new ones. Um, so for our first roll call, Commissioner Engelford.
Here, or, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Fountain.
Light is on, I think.
I hear ya. Commissioner Fountain.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Workman.
Here.
Commissioner Breshears.
Here.
Commissioner Munn.
Here.
Commissioner McLean.
Here.
Vice Chair Garrett Kuenraskey.
Here.
And Chairman Robertson.
Here. Thank you. Okay, I assume everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes from July twentieth. Is there any additions, corrections that need to be made to the minutes?
No.
Okay, hearing done, then those minutes will stand as presented. Come to a point in our agenda where we invite any citizen that's with us that wants to address the planning commission to come forward and to address an item that is not currently on the agenda. Uh, if you wish to do so, this is the time to come forward. All right, seeing no movement, and we will move on to our agenda. Kelly, do you want to make that announcement right now, as far as our agenda's concerned?
Uh, sure, and we can probably get the motion taken care of. Uh, for agenda item, I believe it's five B, to address annexation twenty-two dash oh six. There was a misprint with our ann- our agenda packet, unfortunately. Um, and so there is an incomplete record for this application. And so the recommendation before you tonight is to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain of, uh, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. I'm not quite sure if you need to open the public hearing procedures before you do that, though.
I was just gonna say, if we're gonna continue it, we would need to open it, but I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't just have a motion to postpone it, so we can open it at the next meeting.
Does that require an additional public notice?
I, not that I would be aware of it, would be the exact same thing.
Okay, that's fine.
If you're more comfortable, hey, if you're more comfortable with postpon- opening it and postponing it, I'm fine with that.
I just want to make sure.
If there's an abundance of caution.
As an abundance of caution, I'd say, let's go ahead and open the hearing.
Open it.
Um, but that would be the recommended action for that.
Okay, so we have, uh, scheduled three public hearings, we have two annexations and a subdivision proposal. We will proceed, uh, with the first one, and then when we get to the second one, we'll then open that and continue it, and then move on to the third one. So, uh, before we open the public hearings, I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney.
All right, so tonight's hearings will be pursuant to the quasi initial hearing procedure set forth in Oregon law. Uh, we will start out with the applicant who has the burden of proof. Uh, if you have any questions about procedures, given the audience that we have today, and I don't think there will be, you can let me know, and I'll talk to you, I'll let you know the order that will do it. Uh, please understand that the testimony can be in oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan of the city's land use regulations. Any ish- any issues raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the commission and party members to, uh, an opportunity to respond. Note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing, will prevent any appeal to the land use board of appeals. With that, Mr. Chair, you can ask if there's any conflicts of interest, bias.
Okay, so we will open a public hearing, planning file A dash two-two dash zero-five, uh, annexation, and ask the commission if there's any expertise contact, conflict of interest, or bias. Hearing none, then we will proceed and turn it over to staff for a staff report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's get the screen going, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so before you tonight is a proposed annexation, annexation file A twenty-two dash oh five for a property located on South Twelfth Street, it's on the east side of the Twelfth Streets and north of Airport Road. Please ignore my screen, because I was putting a PowerPoint presentation together very quickly, included, didn't edit it quickly enough. Um, the application is for the annexation, the comprehensive plan designation is residential mixed density. Um, and the assigned first zoning of the property would also be residential mixed density. Um, and the applicant has indicated an acceptance of that zoning designation. The property is generally surrounded by single-family residential homes, except for to the west is currently vacant, uh, property. The property is contiguous to city limits on the north and west property lines, and therefore being contiguous to city property, it is eligible for annexation. And there are public facilities, um, within Twelfth Street, including water, sewer, and storm drainage. Um, and the applicant is, uh, requesting annexation to be able to, um, connect to the, the city's, uh, facilities. And so based off of, uh, its contiguous nature, and based off of the availability of public utilities, um, the site is eligible for annexation. The, uh, agenda report does provide, uh, detailed findings as to, uh, the exact, uh, justification for the annexation, but generally speaking, being contiguous to the property and able to be developed to a standard by having access to facilities are the main basis for annexation. Um, so the recommended action tonight is to, uh, propose acceptance of the annexation to the city council and assign the zoning of residential mixed density. And with that, I'll conclude my staff report, and I am available to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, then we will go ahead and open the public testimony portion of our hearing. Invite the applicant or applicants represented to come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying, I am the property owner representative, our address, office address is on file already. Uh, so this is a pretty straightforward application, I really don't have much to add to, um, Kelly's overview of our proposal. Uh, it is land that is surrounded by city limits already, this will change the, um, the boundary and allow for the city of Lebanon's code standards to be applied, if and when the property's ever developed. Uh, can be served by public utilities and streets, um, so we feel that it is timely. My main purpose of being here tonight is just answering any questions that you might have about the application. Is there any questions from the commission that I can answer?
Any questions for Laura? Okay.
So much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak in, um, what's the right word? A favor, there you go, kept wanting to say benefit, uh, in favor of the application. All right, anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, then we will close the public testimony portion, all remaining discussion will be amongst staff and planning commissioners. So, any concerns whatsoever about the criteria, the process, uh, whether this actually qualifies for annexation or not? See a lot of heads shaking, no? Do you feel that the criteria has been met with the application?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, if there's no further concerns, is anybody prepared with a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If the planning commission recommend approval of the annexation of A dash twenty-two dash oh five to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report, and direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned second, any further discussion? Okay, all those then in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. So then we will, uh, move on to our second agenda item, which is public hearing planning file A dash two-two day zero-six. Same hearing process will apply to that one.
No, just reiterate.
Reiterate the appeal issues. Uh, please understand the testimony must be in oral or written form, but must be addressed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan of the land use regulations. Any issues raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient enough to allow the commission and party members an opportunity to respond, please note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing, will prevent any appeal to the land use board of appeals.
Okay, thank you. So, is there any expertise contact, conflict of interest, or bias that needs to be disclosed?
I don't know if it's necessarily conflict of interest, but, uh, I own property that is, uh, near this, uh, proposed, uh, property to be developed.
And that's very common, and it is fine to disclose it. Um, does the fact that you live close to it affect your ability to, to base your decision on the, uh, facts before the commission?
It does not.
Do you have any bias, or, or, you have any bias towards the, uh, the, the application, or anybody involved with the application?
I do not.
Then you should be fine.
Okay. All right, so, uh, as stated before, we're gonna continue this, so I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing until the September meeting.
We can include in the motion to continue and leave the record open, so that we can provide the appropriate record as part of the agenda, that would be good.
Okay, that'll keep you, Dave?
Okay, I moved that the planning commission moved this, um, annexation A dash twenty-two oh six, uh, to the September twenty-first planning meeting and contin- as a continuance of today's meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so my motioned second to continue this hearing to the September meeting, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our third agenda item, public hearing planning file S dash two-two day zero-five, proposed eight-lot subdivision, uh, any expertise contact, conflict of interest, or bias?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I gotta put it on the record. All, all, all testimony must be directed towards the criteria outlined in staff report, the comprehensive plan of the city's land use regulations. Any issues raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient to allow the commission and party members an opportunity to respond. Note that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues, by the close of the hearing, will prevent any appeal to the land use board of appeals.
Okay, thank you. Now back to conflict of interest, expertise contact, or bias. All right, not seeing any. So with that, then I'll turn it over to staff for staff report.
Thank you again, before each night is proposed subdivision, S twenty-two dash oh five is for a property off of Crowfoot Road and South Sanium Highway. Um, this property was just proposed to be annexed before the, um, planning commission last month, and the city council voted to approve the annexation last week. Um, the property is zone residential mixed entity, and surrounding the property to the north and the south is a mix of properties within the city and the county, which includes a mix of single-family homes and an auto body shop. To the east is Chita Lake, and to the west is the Seven Oaks Middle School. Um, in South San- uh, sorry, that's not right, in Cascade Drive, uh, there are existing public facilities, including water, sewer, and storm drainage, which are proposed to be connected as part of the subdivision. Um, as you can see on the screen, the subdivision would include the creation of eight residential lots and a private streets. Um, each lot is over five thousand square feet, with the maximum lot size of eighty, um, just over eighty-two hundred net square feet. That does not include any of the area associated with the private street and required turnaround area, um, as access easement areas are not included in the net, uh, lot area. So with each lot area being over five thousand square feet, that provides the opportunity, um, to do a single-family detached home or a duplex on the property. It also has the flexibility of different housing types that would allow for lesser property sized, including single-family attached type dwelling units. Um, the, uh, existing, the proposed easement is for a private street, and so there is a proposed five-foot wide sidewalk uh, that would be provided along the frontage of the properties, um, and it would provide for the single access point onto Cascade Drive. Um, there is also additional easements that are proposed as part of it, uh, for drainage easements, as well as a shared maintenance agreement, um, to maintain the private streets, and as well, and public utility easements. Um, for the site, it does not include any, uh, maps, uh, hydrics, hydraulic soils, um, or wetlands, and it is also not located within any of the special overlay districts, or floodplain, or the airport, uh, as such. Um, in addition to that, in terms of traffic, uh, the site does have a frontage on both Cascade Drive and South Sanium Highway. Uh, however, as you can see on the proposed site plan, there is no, uh, vehicular or pedestrian connectivity to South San- South Sanium Highway. Um, it all funnel, all of the traffic funnels to the one proposed drive access on Cascade Drive. They are, they're, based off of the existing improvements on Cascade Drive, there is no sidewalk or improvements on that, uh, eastern side of the street. Um, and so as part of the proposal would be a deferred improvement, um, for when that side of the street is improved, the development would provide its fair share of cost to improve the frontage along Cascade Drive, once that does occur. Um, in terms of traffic counts, uh, as identified in the staff report, the number of traffic counts that are provided, um, associated with the eight lots, um, for up to the duplexes, uh, does not trigger the need for a traffic impact analysis based off of the trips per day, or the peak trips. Um, and based off of the fact that there is an existing internal circulation, um, and area within the Cascades, uh, the school across the streets. Um, it is not anticipated that the number of units that are provided, and the number of peak trips per day would provide a sufficient, a significant conflict with the existing traffic patterns for the pickup and drop-off for the schools. Um, and so with that, I will conclude my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for staff?
I think I have a new guy question. On the top page four, it, it talks about, uh, single-family detached dwelling and/or duplex and administrative review for a townhome zero-lot line or multifamily development. Can somebody explain what that really means to me?
Yeah, so per development code, when you have a subdivision like this, what you're approving is the division of land. Um, and that division of land determines the types of dwelling units that can occur on the property. Um, so for example, all of the lots are less than nine thousand square feet, and so there is no opportunity based off of the subdivision for a multifamily development to occur on any of the properties, because a property needs to be at least nine thousand square feet in size. For the properties, the sizes that they are, pretty much you can develop any type of residential development on the property um, other than multifamily, so that includes a townhome, which is attached to and exists to other dwelling units on both sides. It includes a single-family attached home, which is attached to another single-family home on one side. Um, or it includes a, a zero-lot line development where the homes are staggered, where they can be developed right on the property line. And so there are several different types of single-family homes that can be built, um, depending on what they propose, after the subdivision is approved. Um, a single-family detached home or a duplex is permitted by right in our code, which means that there's no further public review or public notification required for that type of development. All they have to do is apply for a building permit. For all of those other housing types, like the single-family attached, the townhomes, the zero-lot line, all of those trigger an administrative review application, which does require public notification and public comment periods associated with them.
Gotcha, thanks, Kelly.
Any other questions for Kelly? Or staff? So Kelly, remind me again, because it's a private street, how many units, uh, can access it?
A maximum of sixteen, and so with the eight lots, they would, they would maximize the number of units on a private street.
Okay, so this one's right at the max. Okay, good. All right, any other questions? All right, then we will open the public testimony portion, invite the representative or the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, my name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying, uh, the address of the office is on record with the application. Uh, so as always, Kelly does such a great job with an overview, uh, doesn't leave me too much more to say about our applications middle. Um, but as she mentioned, the proposal is just for a subdivision tonight. Um, it does allow for several different types of residential housing types in the future. Uh, included in the proposal is an improvement of a private street, um, so this will just provide access to the residents living within that street. Public utilities are available in Cascade Drive along the frontage of the site, and those will be brought in and developed under that private street um, to give service to each of the, um, lots when they're developed. Um, we've limited access to the state highway for safety reasons, um, and because of the number of trips that the site will generate will not cause any concerns on that local street that's already available. The applicant owner is willing to, um, do a fee in lieu of improving sidewalk along the frontage of the site, um, because if it was be constructed today, it wouldn't connect to anything, so we're gonna wait to see when that would be more timely, but, um, do a comfort, make a financial commitment to doing that in the future, when the rest of that infrastructure is developed. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and be available to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Have you seen any architect drawings as far as what the owner plans on putting on these lots?
I have not, no.
Think that his intention is to do all duplexes, or a mix of single-family dwellings and duplexes?
I really, I haven't mentioned to say, we haven't spoke to talk about what the final development pattern would be. I think traditionally, they've built single-family duplexes, I don't think the middle housing types would be, um, in their normal, um, development work, but I really can't say for sure.
I, I didn't see anything in here, maybe I missed it, is there anything in here pertains to a, an HOA? So if the street, this private road develops a big pothole, who's gonna fix that pothole?
Yeah, included in the proposal is a shared maintenance agreement, so that'll be a private agreement that gets recorded, um, usually with a separate document than the final plat that outlines what each of the lots would be committing to, to, to pay their fair share of maintaining that once it's improved.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions. The turnaround at the, uh, back end of it. What, what's the plan to keep it from being used as extra parking for the locals? Uh, so that, for instance, emergency vehicles or garbage trucks can't turn around?
Yeah, uh, that's protected in several different ways, so there is going to be an emergency access easement that's recorded over that um, portion of the property, when I say over that, I mean the private drive and the turnaround. Uh, by standard fire code, they do require painting that, uh, indicates a no parking zone, as well as signage. And the fire department does have the ability to monitor that, so if there is ever an issue, there is a citation mechanism that they can follow up to alleviate any issues should they develop, but usually just through standard striping and signage, people are made aware that it's a no parking area.
I think we actually, sorry to interrupt, we actually gave, uh, it's been a while, but we actually entered into an agreement to allow the, uh, an identified person from the police department, or fire department, to actually issue citations for situations like that.
Okay.
And included in the proposal, they'll have, um, adequate o- onsite parking, so they'll be able to park in a garage and also a driveway, so that'll accommodate some vehicles, and then there will be one line of, uh, on-street parking on the private drive, uh, that will allow for some spillover parking.
Okay. So, that's a good idea, Dave.
I, I had a quick question, just from my own knowledge, um, how do you determine where fire hydrants go in places like this?
Yeah, the, the fire code actually talks about distance requirements of how, um, far they can be separated from one another. And the fire department, part of a standard review, reviews these plans, and they also review the final construction plans to make sure those meet the fire code provisions. Um, but typically with residential development, I, I believe the fire code states about six hundred feet of separation distance. Uh, and then the fire hydrants are actually shown on the utility plans, then they can measure to ensure those distances are met. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, my second question is, the private street, the property to the south of. Okay, my second question is the private street, the property to the south of that, I know it's a private street and as we said, only sixteen units can access it. But if the property to the south was ever developed, could it be extended to an actual city standard street and be used? Or is there some restriction to that?
I think that's an interesting question to bring up. So the private easement is going to have, it's on private property. The city's code does not require any public streets in that area. So if you wanted to talk about maybe hypothetical situations and how this could play out in the future, is the private owners could come into an agreement to widen that to serve more potential development to the south. Or as the properties to the south, they may acquire additional land. They might develop something similar that matches this along that street front. So it really depends on the timing of that development, how big the property to the south ultimately is at the time of development and know if they'd have want to share that access way and they could come to an agreement or if they would just develop their own.
Okay.
A long-winded answer to say it really depends on what suits their needs at that time.
Well, yeah, I guess because it have, if it was dedicated, it would, they would take away from their lot size. Well, essentially, not their usable lot, but okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I haven't ever seen any get combined or widen. It's usually people just follow this type of pattern of development along, along each property, but.
Yeah, it was just theoretical that I.
But properties are all sorts of different sizes and configurations, so it really just is unique to each one as they develop.
Right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, then we will close public testimony and all further discussion will be amongst planning commissioners and staff. So what's your thoughts? You see any concerns, any issues with the application? Honestly, I wish they were all this easy. Any concerns? Not seeing any at all. All right then, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision application S twenty two dash oh five for the eight lot subdivision, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development and direct staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Then motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, although then in favor of the motion, please say aye. And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to commissioner business and comments. So Ron, I have a question that was addressed in this hearing that we just completed about setting aside funds for future road improvement.
Yes.
So the question that came to mind on the two annexations, the one that we did and the one that we continued, those properties are both developed on county standard roads.
Yes. So if they ever, so let's take Twelve Street for instance. They would probably be required, if they came in for some kind of a development, they would probably be required to put sidewalk in at least out front on that section of Twelve. That's what's, that's what's there now. So they would be required. If you look at the other one that you continued tonight, there's actually a project there to put a traffic signal in, which will happen at some point. And with that widening of that Stoltz Hill Road and making it city standard, we actually have an IGA with Lynn County to take over jurisdiction of the first three or four hundred feet of Stoltz Hill to the south of airport. So that's how that would work.
So what do you, I guess my question is, what if there is no development? What if, for instance, the one on Twelve Street, if they're happy the way she sits? What would be the trigger?
The city would be the trigger. At some point, the roadway fails and we go in and do it. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way it works unless there's some trigger for them to make those improvements out there. You can see all along that section of Twelve Street where you've got nothing but a sidewalk in most cases. And it does not make sense to take a ditch drained road and take a hundred feet of the frontage and turn it into a curb and gutter drained road. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't work. You end up with the same situation you have on Walker Road right now. So in lieu of some of that stuff, we actually have them pay into a deferment fund. And we use it when whenever that project's going to go, but that's how we would do that.
Okay, so is there a non-remonstrance or anything as part of the annexation?
On, on that one, no.
On, on.
Strictly an annexation.
Okay.
Strictly an annexation. We don't have any way to, I suppose we could, I suppose you could condition it that, hey, if we ever develop this, but I think for the most part, we would look at it if if they did develop. The reality is a single family developing like that home, a lot like that. You've got to have everybody in order to do that. So in some cases, we would just say, hey, you've got to pay into this. Depends, depends on the street, really, is what it depends on.
Okay, I bet it never come up before. And I, I saw your comment on that and I thought, well, what about these others? I didn't know how that worked.
Well, we would, we would typically do it as a condition of development. We wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily do that during the annexation process. There are other things that trigger sidewalk improvements. So if you come in and pull a building permit, like or a plumbing permit to hook to the sewer, then at that point you would pay your SDC fees that, because you've been in the county for that long, so you would pay the city SDC fees. And then you would also probably be required as that permit, we use a permit a lot of times to condition, hey, you don't have sidewalk in your, on your front. So at that point, we would do that unless there was some kind of big development.
Yeah.
Then we would look at the street holistically.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Got anything, Kelly?
Obviously, we're going to have a meeting next month. And thanks for putting up with me being on Zoom. I'm in Oklahoma for a Brownfields Conference and so obviously I couldn't be there tonight, so I guess just welcome to all of the new commissioners and thank you for putting up with a clunky first one. It will get better in the next coming months.
So does everybody know everybody? Probably not.
I'm not familiar with Marcellus. This is the first time I've seen him.
Well, he's the new kid. So.
You have to stand up and tell us about yourself.
Kristen was here last month and both you were here last month.
No, this is my first.
Oh, this is your first one. So we got two new kids. So yeah, let's, do you, do you mind a little bit of who you are, where you came from?
Sure. So yeah, my name is Marcellus Angel Ford. I live here in Lebanon, obviously. I grew up between Dallas and Monmouth. My grandmother lived here in Lebanon for many years. She taught school, retired. She was teaching at Cascade. Anyway. Yeah, I went to Lynn Benton, spent seven years in Oklahoma, so I know exactly what you're going through out there. I was in Tulsa, so, well, Tulsa area anyway, but it's close enough. Yeah.
Have you had any prior government experience or?
No.
This before?
No.
What made you want to be on the planning commission?
I have noticed the direction our country is headed and become concerned and you know, I may not be able to change things, you know, nationally, but I can get involved right here. So I wanted to pick something that that would be good at introducing me to what's going on in the city.
Well, thank you for your interest.
Yeah. Don?
Name's Don Fountain. I've lived here all my life, which is about sixty-six years. And raised three kids here. They're still in the area. Been on a Crowfoot School Board for years till we consolidated with Lebanon. Been on the board of the Boys and Girls Club and just want to stay a part of, keep Lebanon what it was when I grew up and a good place to raise a family. That's why I'm here.
Thank you for joining.
Yeah. So Dave, we didn't put you on the spot last month, so why don't you tell us a little bit?
I'm Dave Workman. I'm a chief recovery officer at Lincoln Federal Credit Union. Both sides of my family moved here in the forties. So my roots run pretty deep. Married thirty-five years to a wonderful woman who's patient puts up with me. I have two daughters, grown daughters and a ten-month-old grandson that I just got, little Ezekiel David. So I'm kind of here for the same kind of feel these fellows are. I'm looking to get involved with the city that I love so much and make sure that I'm involved and stay in the course. And I'm also running for city council and ward too, so.
It's right, so you may not hang around very long.
Well, it's possible. Sorry, Kelly.
Thanks, Dave.
Kristen?
Oh, I'm good. Thanks for asking.
If you don't tell us about yourself.
About myself last time.
You don't tell them, I will.
Okay, go for it. Let's hear what you have to say. Maybe not. My name is Kristen Baxter. I am born and raised in Lebanon. Currently in real estate, however, my background is in social work. I have five kiddos and little hobby farm and spend all my time in Lebanon. My kids are going to be going to school here, so that's really my interest in being involved and just kind of seeing the direction the city's going and being a part of that, so. Anything to add there?
So why don't you explain your name? Everybody's going to ask you, so I might as well explain it.
Oh, just how, it's just spelled weird. My mom wanted to name me a Norwegian name, so she spelled my name K A, but she was also not right on with that. So it's just Kristen. She says Karistin, but she's from Oklahoma, so that also is where that comes from. So we fight about how it's actually said, but it's, it's just Kristen.
Thank you for joining.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, we got a good group. As Kelly was saying, this is the first time in her tenure that we've had a full contingent of planning commissioners. So good, glad to have everybody aboard.
Like a heck of a poker game.
I almost did. I went to Safeway and I saw them and I was like, that'd be weird, but I will next time.
Suggestions.
We've been working on the planner for what, three, four years and nothing's happened, so.
I'm not coming back from Oklahoma. That's it.
So Kelly, why don't you, why don't you bring us some exciting stuff and controversial issues so that we can
I'll do my best.
Is it an interesting conference?
It is a very interesting conference. There's been quite a lot to learn. And there's still three days left, so it's, it's been very interesting, bringing a lot back to the community, so.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Do we have just the one hearing then that we continued or is there others?
That is the one and only hearing for September's meeting. We will also be scheduling a community workshop for the housing production strategy sometime in September. I believe it'll be the last week in September. And then the consultants will be coming in October, likely via a Zoom call to provide an update to the planning commission on the status of the housing production strategy and the next steps. So next month will be light. I'm hearing that October might be quite a busy month, so.
Okay, anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, travel safe.
Dairy Queen coming, Kelly.
It's coming. I don't know when, but it's coming.
One good thing to do while you're in Oklahoma is to go to Brahms.
Brahms?
Brahms. It's like Dairy Queen, except better, actually.
Don't.
Depends on what city you're in.
Well, we're in Oklahoma City. There's plenty of, I am absolutely surprised about how many good restaurants there are around here so far. We haven't had a bad meal yet, so. Anyway, have a good night, guys.
How are you?
How are you guys?